Commissioner, thank you very much. I am very pleased to introduce Mr. Mark Lester. He is from DOS Aviation. He is the Vice President of Business Development. And thanks to Mark for driving down through the weather tonight. He will tell you something about DOS Aviation. We've had some discussion during the past week or so about DOS and what's going on. I know a lot of people are present here to obtain some information. And Mr. Lester is gonna fill in some of the blanks for us. So, Mr. Lester, thank you for attending the meeting tonight. We appreciate you coming to Raton.
Great, thank you. I'm very excited to be here. Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm Mark Lester, Vice President of DOS Aviation. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our executive team, the men and women at DOS, we are very proud and excited to start operations here in Raton. As I put a short presentation here together to kind of orient you to what DOS Aviation is, what our history has been, and what exciting things we have planned in the near future and for the long term here in Raton to start off small but then grow into a sustainable and economically viable flight training operation here in Raton. I'll certainly ask any questions. If I start dropping acronyms, and as the military tends to do, then just call me out on it, and I'll try to back up a little bit here. So, a little bit about DOS Aviation. DOS was started 45 years ago in 1970 by military aviators, and we continue to be led by military aviation. We are actually privately held by John F. Lehman and Company, which is a private equity firm. As you may recall, Mr. Lehman was a Secretary of the Navy under President Reagan. And so even all the way up to our senior levels, he's a naval aviator himself. So we've got that theme. You'll see a theme here, building around military aviation and the defense community. We are headquartered out of Colorado Springs, have about 500 employees worldwide. We provide support not only here in the states, but also in Africa, in Europe, and just starting operations in Taiwan as well. I'll try to hit some of those as well. Our ISO 9001 is a quality control management process. We're very proud of that. And we see that our quality and our performance is really what drives our mission's success and has been an enduring element of our company over the years in flight training, aircraft maintenance, and in airfield logistics. And I'll try to hit upon what those things all mean here. It's a little bit about a mission statement. A real focus on the Department of Defense. We do support select allies, and that's some of the growth we may see here in Raton, all vetted through the U.S. Defense and the Department of State, of course. But also kind of paramilitary areas as well. Up to this point, we have not gotten into the general aviation side of business, but certainly with unmanned systems and the growth in that area, and now with our FAA certification for a flight school, that certainly opened up the doors. And I'll talk a little bit about that process. Randy Miller is our CEO. He's an Air Force Academy grad, flew special operations helicopters as well as fixed-wing cargo planes. I served in the Air Force as well, more on the space side of business though. And then spent, after getting out as a captain, worked for Booze Allen Hamilton for a number of years in the defense community before ending up at DOS Aviation. And Paul Walker, as many of you have met, is our Vice President of Flight Training. He's a retired Air Force Colonel as well, and he oversees all of our flight training, including the operation that we're starting to stand up down here. You see a brief overview of our customers: Air Force, Army, Navy, Marine Corps. The Defense Logistics Agency owns a lot of the fuels contracts that we support at the airfields. We have done a little bit of NASA work on the aviation side. And you see some of the other federal agencies that kind of rounded out: FBI, Department of Homeland Security, organizations of that nature. So I alluded to briefly our core competencies: flight training, aircraft maintenance, and airfield logistics. And what that really means is, on the flight training, that's both fixed wing and rotary wing, so helicopters, as well as some maintenance training. And then kind of what comes along with that is aircraft maintenance. And so you'll see contracts. We're doing logistics support. In fact, we're wrapping up a contract at the Air Force Academy where we maintain all of their aircraft up there. And we also operate the tow planes up there. And then we're doing rotary wing maintenance, where we're maintaining helicopters, a lot of Huey helicopters on that side of the fence. And then you see things like washing aircraft, corrosion control, transient alert, and in the fuels contracts that kind of round out everything where you were maintaining and maintaining the fuels at airfields. So we have two models of how we do flight training. This could be rotary wing or fixed wing, where DOS owns and operates everything. We'll call that a COCO, contractor-owned, contractor-operated. And that's certainly the model that we're looking to employ here in Raton, where we're bringing the aircraft down, we're bringing, we'll have instructors here, we'll be maintaining the aircraft, obviously. And so that's kind of a turnkey, and we have a much larger operation like that up in Pueblo, Colorado, and I'll talk about that briefly. Then the other model is where the government provides largely the training platform. So in this case, it could be very expensive go-to-war aircraft, and then we're providing the courseware in the flight instruction, but they're paying for the multimillion-dollar aircraft on that side of the fence. So I alluded to the Air Force contract up in Pueblo. It's the initial flight training contract. We've been executing this contract now for nine years. This is a hallmark contract of ours, and it's a total turnkey operation. And it's what I call, what we're looking here at Raton, this is kind of this on steroids up there. Commissioner Chavez and Mr. Berry have gotten a chance to visit this operation. But we're training upwards of 2,000 Air Force officers and Marine Corps officers on how the basics of flight training. So they're learning on Diamond DA-20 aircraft, single prop that you see there. And we're teaching the basics, but not only how to fly, but how to be a military aviator. So all pilots, navigator candidates, and remotely controlled pilots, or drone pilots, come through our program. And that's what the Marines sends their candidates through. Those are the drone pilots that they're sending through. And that contract's coming up for recompete. We have, we're the dominant player at the Pueblo Airport. I would say, you know, Pueblo is very similar to here in Raton. An economy that was shifting from a legacy base, if you will, to then a new base. And so we're one of the top employers in Pueblo. It's been, you know, a great place, and I see very much the same thing starting here, kind of the walk phases here in Raton. We pride ourselves on our safety record. We've been recognized both by our customer for strong performance and safety, as well as OSHA, and we've received their Sharp Award three times. And we have a very safe record. So our general aviation has about six and a half to seven mishaps every 100,000 flight hours, and at least one or two deaths. We have had no deaths and only about two mishaps every 100,000 hours. So once in a while, a hard landing happens, and we understand that. We're flying over a quarter million flight hours since we've started the operation. So very busy. In fact, Pueblo can be one of the top 10 busiest airports in the nation. So we're not planning to do that here. Don't, don't, it's okay. It's all a process. But this is the gateway to Air Force Aviation. Everyone who wants to fly in Air Force comes through this program. And then we're also training the Army how to fly go-to-war aircraft. This is the Apache Tac helicopter, the Chinook cargo helicopter, and the Blackhawk helicopter down at Fort Rucker. That's where the Army's providing all of the aircraft, and we're training the students how to fly that. So that's warrant officers and commissioned officers go through that program. On the aviation maintenance side, hit upon some of this, but this is really a whole gamut. We get into some light depot work, but largely it's operational-level maintenance, keeping the flight line up and running. You do get into the avionics side. You get into some fabrication, things of that nature on the aircraft, but it's largely keeping a flight line running and operational. And we've done that at the Air Force Academy. You see some of the aircraft there on the left: rotary wing, the Coast Guard, gliders, anything that really takes the air, we've maintained. And on the logistics side, wide range here. This is where the global presence really starts to play pretty strongly. We're maintaining the fuels out in Djibouti, Africa, where there's a naval base, a joint base there, supporting the global war on terror. We're in Suda Bay, Greece. We're in Puerto Rico. And then kind of one of our other, I should have mentioned earlier, one of the other new operations overseas is over in Taiwan, where we're training the Taiwanese National Airborne Services Corps how to fly the Blackhawk helicopter for civil missions. So how do you rescue people out of the ocean? How do you fight fires? Things of that nature. So what's going on here in Raton? So, look, this has been an exciting culmination, and just really kind of the start, or the end of the start, I guess you would say. Over the past several months, we knew we needed to expand our operations. As I mentioned briefly, what we were doing in Pueblo, great operation there, but we're starting to saturate that airport. The Air Force continues to have higher demand based on their increased need of RPA or drone pilots. And so we have some growth there, but we really need to preserve that. And we say, look, we've got new customers that are coming to us, and we don't have a place to go. So we did a search, and Raton came up on the radar screen, and we started talking to Express out at the airport, and then quickly started talking to Mr. Berry and Commissioner Chavez in particular. And this has been a tremendous, I can't stress this enough, this has been tremendous partnership from the federal level on down through the local level. And it's been great to be a part of. And we certainly have kind of kind of done it without all of those levels of support. And very quickly, I mean, we went from nothing to, hopefully now we'll have a place of operation, and the FAA just granted us, or what we call a Part 141 Schoolhouse. So they have to do a certification. We passed that, and we got the certificate on the 12th. So this is, then, so we had FAA engaged in saying, yes, we want to support this process. At the state level, Jane Lucero at the Department of Transportation Aviation Division got engaged, and she said, whatever you need. Lieutenant Governor Chavez, excuse me, Lieutenant Governor Sanchez, excuse me, Sanchez was engaged. The National Guard, Brigadier General Salis was engaged, and right here at the local level. So everything came together to make this work and says, yes, this is what we want to see in a crawl, walk, run type of approach. So expanding out operations, while our operations, so we've been supporting the military for 45 years, and many of the military contracts don't require the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA oversight on this. But we're starting to see more and more of those contracts needing that, and we're starting to see some other federal agencies who would like our support require that certification. They call it a Part 141. It's just part of the regulations is how they pull that out. And we didn't have one of those. So getting that certificate is key to open up a lot of doors here, and we wanted to maintain that operation here and have that growth, and have a long-duration relationship. Raton was attractive, not only for the people and the airspace here, but it's very similar to the weather that we have in Pueblo, lots of days to fly. It's sparsely populated, so, you know, and our aircraft that we're currently operating on are fairly low, you know, quiet, but they're not silent. So we understand that. So, you know, in southern Colorado, northern New Mexico, very open airspace to work from. There was an existing infrastructure here with the Army National Guard Armory Readiness Center to work from. And so, and also it's close by, right? So it's only an hour flight, and I've flown it down multiple times from Pueblo in our little DA-20s, only two-hour drive. It was an easy drive over the pass. And so it was nearby to help on logistics and keep everything very synergistic with our current operations. So we are looking at a number of opportunities. Many of them are in the works. In fact, I have a meeting with an aircraft manufacturer next week to talk about when they sell a fleet of aircraft, how DOS can be their provider and train their pilots here in Raton. It may be single-engine piston aircraft, multi-engine, tail draggers, rotary wing, but we're not looking at jets. We're not looking at big aircraft. These are largely what you consider general aviation aircraft, but we're training in a military style for unique mission requirements. I have about five or six opportunities that are building out. Some of them will happen, some of them won't, to be honest. But that's why I keep a large portfolio going, so we know that things are gonna keep on moving forward. We've taken this crawl, walk, run phase. So the first step was securing a Part 141, which we did earlier this month with a lot of help and support. The next step here is, part of this meeting, is to secure our lease agreement for the Readiness Center so that we can, you know, operate in there and start turning that into a flight training operation, and then start looking at lodging options for our students and our instructors, and start making hires and start bringing in contracts. That's kind of the run phase. It'll take some time. It's not gonna be overnight, but each step along the way gets us another step closer. So in summary, once again, I am very excited to be here. Thank you for inviting me here and inviting DOS to be part of your family. It certainly has felt like a family here. I cannot stress enough that all the support we've had and look forward to continuing to have, and for DOS to be a good partner with the city and with the folks of Raton. I do have some handouts here I can leave behind about DOS, and a little flyer about who we are, kind of summarizes some of this, and I have some business cards as well I can leave behind. So if there's any questions, I can certainly field them.
I just appreciate the cooperation that you did with us. Ladies and gentlemen, they came to us with, and asked for nothing except some help in obtaining the FFA permit. Some of the other businesses that we've contacted always want something. I need a million and a half to start out. They didn't ask us for anything but a little bit of help. They're gonna be a great partner with the city of Raton. I thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Raton.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Lester. I have been to the Pueblo facility of DOS. Commissioner Chavez and Commissioner Schuster have been up there, and it, I was blown away by that facility. It is extremely impressive. Everyone I've met with DOS is really a true professional, a lot of accomplished folks working at DOS. It's a top-quality company, and everything about the operation was extremely impressive to me and very professional. I know that when we had a similar presentation at the Lieutenant Governor's office, I really thought that he was gonna fall out of his chair because he was impressed. And what was proposed fits in so well with what the governor and the lieutenant governor had hoped would develop in New Mexico. And I think for once, we're on the right side of, you know, everything lined up in New Mexico. Usually we're the state that is hard to get things done, but, and also FAA was very cooperative. We had a chance to talk to them out there, and good guys, very cooperative. They understood how important this was to the community and very cooperative in the process. And you saw a picture of them receiving their Part 141 certificate. I understand in other states, that's a lot more difficult to do. So we were happy, and I think that some of the staff at the state were very supportive of that, obtaining the certificate as well. But we're excited at the city. We have an item of business to talk about, but glad to see everybody here. We have some good news. And again, Mr. Lester, thank you for coming to Raton.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next item of business is deliberate an act on lease agreement for National Guard facility at Raton Municipal Airport between the city of Raton and DOS Aviation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, what you have in front of you is a proposed lease agreement, and it is very similar to the lease agreement that you executed at our last meeting between the city of Raton and the State Armory Board. And if you'll remember, at that time, I had had some conversations with National Guard and attended the meeting of the State Armory Board, and we had asked them to give the building to the city of Raton. And they're in the process of doing that, but there is some remediation of lead in the building that they want to complete before they transfer that to the city of Raton. So we anticipate that that agency-to-agency transfer will happen during the next 12 months. And the State Armory Board did offer the city a lease agreement for that period so that we could move the project along, and there was no lease fee in that agreement. So you all executed that agreement. The State Armory Board executed that. It is my recommendation to the Commission that we offer the same terms to DOS Aviation. So in the lease agreement, and that is my recommendation to you, the format is almost the same as the State Armory Board agreement. It does mention that there is no lease fee for a period of a year. Now, in order to do that, this is not an agency-to-agency transaction. This is an agency-to-private company transaction. We would have to meet the terms of the Local Economic Development Act. There is both a state statute regarding that and a local ordinance that we have in place here. And so what that says is, if we're providing something of value for an economic development incentive, Joe Q. Public has to, in turn, receive something out of that. And what we're looking for is the development of jobs and economic development. So it would require that we have a public participation agreement that states that, and both parties would agree to that, basically. We're providing the building without lease fees, and in turn, the company will provide jobs and economic development. So we have incorporated that public participation agreement in the lease agreement. You see a section in there after lease fees that details out the public participation. And it generally states that we will provide the building at no lease fee. The company will pay for utilities. They'll pay for routine costs like cleaning the building, but they will provide jobs and economic development that will benefit the development or the redevelopment of Raton. So those are the highlights of the contract. Most of the terms of the contract mirror that agreement that we currently have with State Armory Board. And I'll hold up there and answer any questions you have, but the lease agreement is for the term of 12 months, one year, commencing on March 1st. I would also point out that we do have Mr. Hagaman from New Mexico Economic Development present, and I would like to thank Mr. Hagaman for, you know, all his efforts in a number of our economic development projects here recently. But I think that Mr. Hagaman would answer any questions that you might have in regard to leader requirements, specifically, you know, when it deals with public participation agreement.
I'll move that we accept the lease agreement for the National Guard Armory Facility at Raton Municipal Airport between the city of Raton and DOS Aviation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement for the National Guard Facility at the Raton Municipal Airport between the city of Raton and DOS Aviation. Are there any questions or discussion?
On the lead room, it will remain locked, or how would that be controlled?
Under the terms of both our lease agreement with the state and the lease agreement with DOS, the room must remain locked, and no use can take place until that remediation is done. So currently, New Mexico National Guard has done the testing and evaluation. They'll have a contractor come in. If there's any abatement to take place, they'll complete that. But that room will be off limits until that abatement is done.
We did make arrangements with the National Guard Armory Board, I guess that's what we call them, that we could go ahead and lease to, because we had to have written consent.
That is correct. In our agreement with them, we do anticipate subletting the building for economic development purposes. They're well aware of the DOS proposal. General Salis is the adjutant general for New Mexico National Guard. He was present at a meeting at the Capitol in the Lieutenant Governor's office and fully apprised of that, but they are, they are in full agreement with that, the proposal that we have to operate a flight school in the facility.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for taking care of that. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomal?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes. Motion passes.
Mr. Lester, thank you. Welcome to Raton.
Business is deliberate an act on fiscal year 15 audit acceptance.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner. My name is Morgan Brownie. I'm the Audit Manager for the city of Raton FY15 Audit. I believe I spoke with everybody last year. The purpose of my being here today is to summarize results of your FY15 audit in a public forum, which is required by state audit rule. So this is really the last step in the audit process. We held an Audit Exit Conference on November 23rd, 2015. We submitted our audits, our city audits and RPS audits, on December 1st, 2015, two weeks before the due date of December 15th, 2015. We received initial approval for our audits on January 12th, 2016. We submitted the final copies to the Office of State Auditor on January 14th, 2016, and we got our final release letter from the State Auditor's office on February 9th, 2016, which authorizes us to discuss the audit in the public setting. So what I'm gonna do is just summarize the results of the audit and then open it up for any questions that you might have. The primary objective of our audit is to render an opinion on the reliability of your financial statements. That's our, we issue three reports, and the independent auditor's report, that's the report where we issue an opinion. So for fiscal year 2015, the city of Raton received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive. So kudos to Michael Ann and Geneva and Sandy and everybody who helped facilitate the audit and reconcile the numbers. We were able to get sufficient and appropriate audit evidence that those numbers are reliable and issue a clean opinion. So that hasn't always been the case here, so that's, that's good news for the city. And the preceding year, the audit was late, and I came in here and I said I was gonna turn in the audit in on time. That's exactly what I did. And that's because Michael Ann and everybody worked really hard to get me the information that I need, and we were able to get the audit done. If we, during the planning of our audit, we go through your internal controls, we do compliance tests. If we note findings in those procedures, we'll report them in the audit report. With respect to the city of Raton and Raton Water Works, there were not any findings that we noted, which is good, which is the highest, probably the highest grade you could have, is no finding. For RPS, we did have a couple of findings. I'll briefly just mention them. We did go over these. On page 176, we went out to the warehouse. We noted there weren't any verifications of inventory counts. Nobody verifying that those counts were accurate. We didn't note any discrepancies or anything missing or anything. We just thought it would be a better procedure if the warehouse supervisor's inventory counts were double-checked. Somebody who's not involved in the process verifies that those counts are accurate. You have a lot of inventory there for RPS, about $717,000 worth of inventory, some items that could be susceptible to theft, copper, that kind of thing. So we think it would be better if you had a good internal control where somebody would separately verify those counts and make sure that they are accurate. The other finding that we had for RPS was, we had one missing purchase order requisition form. And we looked at 40 dispersments. We looked at controls surrounding those cash dispersments. Your purchase order requisition form is one of your key controls to ensure that those purchases are authorized. This particular one was for legal services. It was, and the dollar amount was not too big, $977. But we could not locate the document, the missing purchase order requisition form. So we could not determine whether that transaction was approved. The two findings that I just discussed, you can have varying levels of severity in these findings. You could have material weaknesses. You can have significant deficiencies, and you can have other matters. This is in the other matter category, which is the less, the least of all severe findings. And so, and I think the dollar amount was relatively small and more the exception to the rule. So by and large, a really good audit result for the city of Raton and Raton Public Service Company. You did not have a single audit this year. Typically, when you have expenditures exceeding $500,000 of federal money, you're, you're subject to a single audit in addition to the audit that we performed. So that wasn't the case this year. You didn't have over $500,000, and so we didn't, we didn't test the federal programs for fiscal year 2015. That may change for fiscal year 2016. So... So typically, we issued three reports, and in this audit, we issued two. So basically, that's the audit in a nutshell. We did have several findings from the preceding year that were resolved. For example, in previous audits, the city was not able to reconcile its capital asset numbers. This year, that was not the case. Beginning numbers were accurate, and so that finding went away. You had a lot of still-dated checks that were outstanding longer than a year. You had that new still-dated check policy. We did follow-up procedures on that. And so based on our follow-up work, that finding went away. And the one I'm most proud of is the late audit finding that you had last year. That went away, and I told you it went away, and I was here, and it went away. So a good job on that. We had a couple comments here, but by and large, clean audit. And so if you have any questions or concerns, just, I'll open it up, and you want to discuss anything in the audit, I'm here, I can discuss it with you. So.
Do you have any questions? The term unmodified, that's kind of confusing to people.
Well, you know, they changed that term.
They changed that term.
It used to be unqualified. It just meant you weren't qualified, you know, but that wasn't what it intended. So we had these clarity standards that came into effect, and they changed the terminology to say unmodified. So if we weren't able to get assurance over debt or capital assets, we could issue what's called a qualified opinion. We'll say everything is fairly stated except for these items. You know, if we weren't able to get sufficient, or through a material noncompliance or something like that, we would say everything is fairly stated except for, we've got this issue over here, and that's a qualified opinion. You can have disclaimer of opinion where we just don't issue any assurance whatsoever. You can have an adverse opinion, and we don't see too many of those. We do have clients who have qualified opinions, and generally, it's in capital assets or some other area. But the unmodified opinion is the highest, it's the cleanest opinion, it's the A, you know. And that's what they call it now. They used to call it unqualified. No one liked that, and so they changed it to, they should just change it to clean audit, you know.
Clean and dirty.
Right. Clean and dirty, but that's what they do.
Thank you.
All right. Any other?
I'd just like to comment that in the five years that I've been involved in this, not only is this the first clean audit I've been involved with, but it's the first time we've not filed an extension of some sort. So appreciate your hard work. Appreciate Michael Ann and Sandy and Geneva's hard work as well.
Yeah, I really do, too, and, you know, you worked late hours and you got it done. And that's how you stay out of standard face spotlight, you know, you turn your audit in on time. Those people that don't, that skip out on their audits, you know, you hear about them in the news, and then the spotlight comes over there, and you start hearing turns like special audit and designations and all this other stuff. So, you know, keep on the good path and turn your audits in on time. You don't have to worry about any of that stuff. Very good.
You said you turned it in by the 1st of December.
Yes.
And on January 12th, the state auditor, did they have you do a few minor corrections or something?
They had a couple comments. So they had, I think they found a typo on a page, and we fixed that. And they had us, we have a separate report for RPS, and so what we do in our notes for all other clients that have component units, we reference that report, you know, to find all the note disclosures and everything in that report. What the State Auditor Office told us this time was, you need to put those, everything from RPS in the city's audit. You can't have it a separate audit, it's not good enough. So to me, it's a little bit of duplication, but, you know, by and large, we just went ahead and did it, you know, and we took our battles with those guys. And, you know, we got, we put all the notes from RPS in here, and it was approved. And, you know, it did take the State Auditor's Office a little bit longer than I had thought, you know. I thought we'd be doing this in, oh, January, you know, but they took their time, and I think it was a new administration that was primarily the reason for it. But, and then we did call them in February, hey, where's this thing at, you know? And the day, the very next day, they sent the letter and everything. So, you know, we had a couple comments, but nothing like the preceding year, and they approved it, so.
Right. Yeah, because one of our goals was to be sure that the audit was in the hands of all of the different fiscal agencies that give you grants, et cetera. And I'm not sure when the session started, January?
It started, I think, January 19th.
19th. So, but we didn't have any, did we have any problems because of the state auditor not releasing this until the February 9th?
I don't believe so, Mayor. I think that, you know, if we would have come down to the end of the session, which they adjourned February 18th, and, you know, we really didn't have an audit or it was obvious that there was some issue with it, we would have had an issue on capital outlay. But I believe there was no issues in considering capital outlay as we went along.
That was my own concern. And I would like to thank you for coming to present the audit. That has not happened always since I have been on the commission, even though it's part of the contract.
Right. Yeah, we like to get out and, you know, anytime you want to, Michael Ann had mentioned training. And so if you want us to come up here and do a training on your understanding of your financial statements, we've done that for Colfax County, we've done that for Lincoln County, we, sometimes they come over to Albuquerque, you know, sometimes we come up here, and there's a de minimis amount, $1,000, we don't have to get that approved, you know. So take advantage of that. We like coming up here and helping you guys understand your financial statements. And, you know, anytime you want us to come up, we'll come up. It's not a big deal, so.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve FY15 audit acceptance. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve fiscal year ending 15 audit. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes. And thank you again.
No problem. And Mayor, Commission, we will follow up on the training. I think it's a great idea to kind of help navigate some of the stuff you see in the financial statements. We'll follow up on that, and, you know, we'll start the budget, beginning of the next audit and budget process, not very far off, so.
Okay, all right. Business is a presentation by Rick Klein of the City of La Jolla and Bill Sobel from Colfax County on the Tiger 7 Grant and discussion of Tiger 8 Grant application for railroad improvements. Is anyone here?
Mayor, Commission, I'm not sure that Mr. Klein made it, I don't know, is Mr. Sobel out there?
I don't see him, Bill.
You know, they might, due to the weather, might add an issue on attending the meeting. I'll kind of give you a summary of where we're at. The City of La Jolla was the sponsor for a grant application, and that is the Federal Transportation DOT Grant. And this happened in 2015. You'll remember that there was a request for the City of Raton to provide some funding for, number one, the consultant to put together a grant application, and then, secondly, as matching funds for the grant application. And that was the round seven of Tiger Grants. And the City of La Jolla was successful. They did receive that grant. That is going to do work in the states of Kansas, Colorado, and New Mexico, and there were many partners along the line, municipalities, counties, and states that participated in that Tiger 7 Grant. And so that work is funded. BNSF has additionally provided funding. Amtrak has provided their share of the funding. So it's a good partnership. And of course, our interest is to keep that track viable, keep Amtrak running on that, keep the Southwest Chief on that. And by keeping the track viable, we would hope that there's an option for freight on that track again in the future. And where that may happen is generally, right now, I think you see most of the freight going east to west. But there is a possibility that with some of the changes in ports and how freight is shipped, port freight coming through the Santa Teresa Port, that there may be an option to ship north and south, and this line could be in play at some point in the future. So that was expressed to us sometime back by the Governor's Office, and I don't know when or if that would happen, but that's a hope. And if the track was not viable, then that's not going to happen definitely. But we hope to keep the track viable. There is a suggestion that there is a round eight of Tiger Grant funding that's out there. It may be coming up fairly quickly. I don't have the facts on that, and I'll get those for the commission. We had planned to hear that from Mr. Klein and Mr. Sobel tonight, but we'll get that to the commission. So essentially, the same deal. I think we want to get all the partners, interested parties along the line that may make some kind of a commitment to a Tiger 8 Grant, probably similar numbers to what we had talked about previously. We'll talk about that when we get into the budget process. Now, I think the suggestion was that initially, I think, in Tiger 6, Garden City, Kansas, was the sponsor, and they're looking for a local sponsor. And number seven round, La Jolla, Colorado municipality, was the local sponsor. And I think that the partners would like to come up with a New Mexico sponsor for Tiger 8. So as I've expressed to the group, we're pretty limited on staff, and it may not be our first option for the City of Raton to be that sponsor. I think we would support Santa Fe County being the sponsor, possibly Burnaleo County, but I didn't rule that out, and that's up to the commission. And there is a commitment of time and manpower. I don't know that there's really a difference in funding. However, it is a reimbursement program. And as I understand, how it's worked is BNSF has up fronted the money, and then the reimbursement would flow backwards to BNSF through the City of Raton. So I'll let you wrap your minds around that a little bit. That's something that we can talk about as we go along. I'm sure we'll talk about it at the next meeting. But those are the basics. There is another funding cycle coming up. Now, the thought is that if you put three Tiger Grants in this line, it's pretty hard for anybody to get away from that. The federal government, Amtrak, BNSF, or the states. And so I think we're pretty good in the fact that it has received funding over two cycles. But the thought is that the round eight funding, if that were successful, the track is going to remain viable long-term, and BNSF, Amtrak, federal government, they're committed to the track. And the states, sometimes they're not the most willing partner, but they're committed as well, and they have to come along as well. So I think we'll leave it, leave the report at that. That's, you know, very basic information for you, not detailed. We'll work on getting detailed information for the commission, and I anticipate talking about this again at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Berry? Approval of the February 9th, 2016 regular commission meeting minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, I didn't find anything that needed to be amended on this one.
There's one small typo.
Typo on page two. It should be Representative Roche instead of Senator Roche.
Okay, all right. I didn't even pick up, I guess I think he should be Senator.
One day, maybe.
One day, maybe.
Make a motion with the amendments. Pass the minutes.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2016 regular commission meeting minutes with the correction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deliberate an act on amendment hanger lease agreement between the City of Raton and Raton Cherokee 6 LLC. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, all of the hangars at the Raton Municipal Airport are constructed under a similar ground lease agreement. There is an existing ground lease agreement for a hanger with Raton Cherokee 6 LLC. Now, that entity is represented here tonight by Bill Srazio and Troy Wilson. They're present here tonight, and they have made a request to me, which I bring to the commission at this time. The agreement was initiated in 2005. The hanger has been existing for a while, and they asked for a revision because the lease agreement described three lots, and it described the dimensions of those lots, and the lease amount was based on the dimensions of those lots. But as I understand, the area described is not really available to the lessees. They don't have control or the ability to do anything with all of that, and they asked, and I think it's because of other infrastructure that's in the area, really prohibits them from having control over the area that's described in the existing lease agreement. So what I would recommend to you, and per their request, what we're talking about in the lease agreement is really just the dimensions of a building plus a six-foot perimeter around the building. So we've revised the dimensions that are described to the dimensions of the building plus that six foot, and we changed the description of the square footage of a lot to the square footage of a hanger structure. That's the only change that's in the agreement, Mayor. You can see that the old language is included and crossed out, and the proposed new language is in red. It all takes place on that first page, and then we have a current signature page dated today if the commission is willing to entertain the amendment.
And this is all acceptable by the VCs?
They have asked for that revision, yes.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the amended hanger lease agreement between the City of Raton and Raton Cherokee 6 LLC.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and two seconds to approve the amended hanger lease agreement between the City of Raton and Raton Cherokee 6 LLC. Is there any other discussion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes. Motion. Deliberate an act and resolution 2016-12, January 2016 financial report. Did I skip something? That is. I was going to say, that's not what's in front of me. Actually, our next item of business is deliberate an act on a lease agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Trap Club.
Mayor, Commission, we have an existing lease agreement with the Raton Trap Club that allows them to operate a trap shooting facility on the airport property. You see the terms of the lease agreement in front of you, and what we're discussing here tonight is a renewal of the existing lease agreement for a five-year period as allowed by the existing lease agreement. So the existing lease agreement is expired or getting ready to expire. Trap Club has asked for a new five-year agreement. The terms are the same, the dates are updated in this four- or five-year period. Now, I would tell you that things have worked pretty well out there from my observation. I did go to a trap shooting event last summer that was held at the facility, and I was extremely impressed by the number of people and the number of out-of-state plates that were drawn in by that event. So the Trap Club has provided me a schedule of their events, but I think it's a good attraction to Raton, brings people in, and seems to be in harmony with the airport operations out there, and I don't see any difference with the DOS operation, no conflict whatsoever. But I recommend approval of the renewal of the lease agreement with Trap Club.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the city of Raton and the Raton Trap Club. Is there any discussion? My only concern, not even a concern anyway, is the amount of lead that is being dropped or whatever onto the property. This agreement does state that the property has to be returned or when the lease expires in the condition that it was in at the time the lease was started. So are we protected on that particular item, do you believe?
Mayor and Commission, I know that that is an issue at NRA Whittington Center, and NRA Whittington has recently had a contractor that has the ability to go back and reclaim that lead from shooting areas, and that process has been underway over the past couple of weeks. So there's a potential of doing that. I would state, and I didn't talk to Mr. McFaul about that, is there anybody present from the Trap Club that can address that? But I would guess that we're using steel shot, or you are using lead. Okay, all right.
But we do reclaim.
Okay.
You do reclaim. How often is that done?
Whenever we can get someone up here. Typically, five, seven years.
Five to seven years, okay. All right, so that is being remediated. All right.
I have just one comment too, Madam Mayor. In my dealings, Raton Trap Club is a 501(c)(3), as is the Raton senior citizens, and now, as we have agreements with municipalities and counties in that, they are making us show us monetarily exactly how they can justify the lease, which the senior citizens will be bringing to this commission, this budget process. That would just be my concern. I don't see anything happening with this because they don't go out for any grants or anything like that, but that might be something we just keep on the back burner.
Yeah, and I would tell the commission that there's not really a timeframe for approval here. We can take our time in evaluating any part of the agreement, do more due diligence on it, not a drop-dead date on this agreement.
I believe on the lead remediation that if they decide to drop it like that, the EPA will be right there, because they're not going to let that slide. So I think at that time, that we could address it at that time.
I know that it's, you know, is an attraction for Raton, and I've been really impressed by the extent of the operations out there.
I have no objection to the agreement myself. I'm just was pointing something that may come down the pipe someday.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you have to file a tax return? Are you under the limits? Do you know?
We've got to be under the limit. I don't know that we do that.
Yeah, I figured you're under the limits. Yeah.
I would still go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement between the Raton Trap Club and the city of Raton.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the city of Raton and the Raton Trap Club. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Mintz?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2016-12, January 2016, Financial Report.
Madam Mayor and Commission, in your packet this evening is the financial report as of January 31st. You will see that our general fund ending cash balance as of the 31st of January was $1,024,268.37, and unless our required 1/12 reserve and the small balance that we have left in our street GRT fund, we have an available cash balance of $610,419.85. I have noted in my notes below that you will see in our gross receipts tax report that we received on February 15th that it does appear that tax and revenue has corrected the shortage that we were seeing in those food and medical distributions. I estimated about $150,000. I know the city manager seemed that it might have been closer to $180,000, $190,000, but I do feel confident that this month's check did reflect that correction. So you will see on the GRT report that the check itself was $522,159. So it's normally probably closer to $320,000. So we will continue to monitor that, just to make sure that whatever correction was made, I'm sure it was a computer-type correction that was made, so we'll continue to monitor those reports every month.
Michael Anne, we have not received a letter from taxation and revenue stating the amount?
Nothing.
We would not expect to get that from either.
Well, I would expect you. I guess I'll put in a call.
I mean, I think I was being kind of overly optimistic that we would have gotten a letter stating, or even a phone call, because I did request it, that somebody contact us personally to go over the reports and to explain to us what exactly happened, but no. And even the particular clerk that I've been in email contact with, no correspondence from her either to follow up and see if our report looked okay, nothing. So we could certainly reach out to them again, or maybe with the assistance of Bill Fulgenetti, we might be able to get some.
We can.
You can with Senator Compost. He would request it.
We can, and we can ask for that. Just to set the scene for you, I mean, there's been a number of instances of litigation between municipalities and tax and rev. They're not good about sharing information. There's been legislation to try to force them to be forthcoming with information to municipalities. They seem to kind of ignore that, and municipal leagues has, you know, it's in the statute, and they're still not really sharing that information. But Mr. Fulgenetti explained to me that there was new litigation coming out, so it's a pretty contentious relationship there. And I would contrast that with, you know, the help and the assistance we got from state aviation on DOS aviation. They're great partners. We have really, throughout this process, not had any feedback from tax and rev. But we were happy to see the funds.
They were ours. They belong to us.
I did note that we also did receive in December and January the first half of the property tax, and then we did receive a check Monday for another like $80,000. So we probably won't see any more property tax distributions until May. As the legislative session has come to a close, we generally anticipate receipt of the small cities assistance that would probably arrive in March. So I'm hoping that generally, when we have the district meetings, the municipal league usually tries to give us an indication of what those amounts will be if we haven't already received the check. So we did budget $25,000 this year, $275,000, sorry.
I was going to say.
Yeah, $275,000. So that's kind of the projection that we're trying to meet. So if it comes in above that, we'll be doing well, but if it comes in less, and I did put a note here kind of how that is determined. It is provided to municipalities with a population less than 10,000, and the distribution is determined by state statute, and they set aside 10% of the net receipts attributable to the compensating tax. And as we all know, that tax is based on oil and gas revenues, and because of that decline, we've already been told not to really expect a huge distribution this year. So this formula is also based on any population growth or decline, which we know we've probably experienced some decline, and then as well, if our per capita taxable gross receipts has changed at all, that's a factor in the formula. So we'll be hoping for $275,000 or more. Other than that, all of our accounts are in balance, and you'll see on the page where we summarize our general fund by department. Overall, the general fund operating budget was not quite 3% below budget. So we have been fairly conservative in our spending, just pending the outcome of the tax and revenue, getting that cleared up. So we only have, you know, we're going into March, so not too many months left in the fiscal year. So like I said, we are showing a percentage-wise, our gross receipts is showing a 0.6734% increase, which is fairly good this time of year, because usually the winter months definitely are the slower time, and so that's generally when we would be showing a decline in our GRT. So with this slight correction, we are close to $13,000 above our projected GRT for this time of year. Is there any questions on our report this evening?
What's the status of the public center payment, extra payment?
I purposely did not send that to New Mexico Finance Authority yet. I wanted to wait till we got the tax and rev resolved so that I could be fairly confident that the projections and the estimates that I gave you, that we were going to have in GRT to make the extra payment, would be there. And so now that I think we're assured that it is there, I will be sending it probably this week. Then that way, we're still within that 45-day requirement for notification. So, but yeah, I was a little apprehensive with what was going on with tax and rev, because if they continued to short our payments, we may not have been able to meet the amount that the commission approved for that additional payment, so, but I think we will be okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-12, January 16, Financial Report.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds to approve Resolution 2016-12, January 2016, Financial Reports. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2016-13, Budget Adjustments 16, Fiscal Year 16.
Madam Mayor and Commission, in your packet is budget adjustment number six. You will see under general fund expenses, this is a net increase or decrease of zero. We did pay out our safety incentives back in November, and a lot of times with staffing changes throughout the year, our budget may exceed or fall short within the various departments. So we've tried to reallocate the available funds amongst the different departments to cover those safety incentives with some funds that we had available in other line items. As far as the transfers in and out that I'm requesting, you will see that these are temporary transfers, so even though we're transferring the money out of the general fund, it will be coming back in before the end of the fiscal year. And this is for two projects that we're working on, the multimodal center and the senior center, and this is just so that we can cover those payments to the vendors pending receipt of the grant reimbursements, which sometimes could take up to 30 days or longer. So I am requesting those adjustments. I know the senior center is moving along quite well, and so hopefully by mid-March, that particular project will be done. So, but like I said, these funds will be put back into the general fund before the end of the fiscal year. And then on the special revenue, under our Fund 201 at the last meeting, we did have the commission approve a new grant that the fire department received, and that was to purchase some wildland equipment. The chief went ahead and put in his purchase requisition for that, and it exceeded the allocation by $107, so he does have additional funds available in his fire grant fund, so we would like to request that we move another $107 to that equipment line item so that he can move forward with that purchase, and that was the grant from the New Mexico Energy and Minerals Department. State Library Grant, we did receive the allocation, and it was a little bit higher than what we had budgeted, so I'm just requesting to increase the revenue and expense there to match the actual award that was received. And then once again, under capital projects, those are just the same transfers in and out for the multimodal and the senior center project. Any questions?
I'll move that we accept Resolution number 2016-13, Budget Adjustment FY6, Number Six, FY16.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-13, Budget Adjustment Number Six, Fiscal Year 16. Is there any other discussion? Questions for Michael Anne?
I'd like to commend Michael Anne once again for, I know what she went through to find that deficit that we had on the funds, and I've seen her working down here Sundays and Sunday night and Saturday night, so she's very diligent in watching our funds, so thank you once again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, you have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2016-14, Direct Deposit and Payroll Policy. Michael Anne, are you going to address that?
I'll just kind of introduce this, but Madam Mayor and Commission, for some time, we've talked about trying to seek efficiency and productivity gains and security through better use of technology that's available. So we have gone to an electronic requisition purchase order system, which really has worked well. We're really happy with that. It's a transition from what city staff personnel have been used to, but they've really adopted that quickly. I think it's working very well. This is kind of a next step in something that we asked the commission to consider tonight. Michael Anne's put together the policy, and I'm going to let Michael Anne cover particulars of the policy, but we would like to propose that payroll transition to a direct deposit. Currently, we write a paper check for each employee and issue that paper check, and there are concerns for the security of doing that, and we just think that it's going to be much more productive and take advantage of, you know, the technology that's available. I think that most entities that have the number of full-time employees that the city of Raton have, whether it's a public agency or a private company, somebody on our equivalent to maybe 85 FTEs or greater would use a direct deposit system, and so we would like to go to that. We'd like to make this effective for the payroll of April 14th. Of course, there's, you know, input of routing information, but I would like to call on Michael Anne to give you the details of the policy and the resolution that we bring in front of you.
Madam Mayor and Commission, like city manager Barry stated, that we would like to implement this policy, and you'll see that I've addressed in the resolution that it is an efficient, secure, and economical method for delivering payments to our employees, and it will also ensure that the payment is deposited timely, even if they're out due to illness, on vacation, or any other type of approved leave, such as if we're out of town for meetings. So it'll be nice to know that the funds are in the bank, even if you're out of town. As he stated, we would like to implement this for the payroll starting on April 14th, and in order to do that, we would distribute to employees next week in their paychecks, as well as the commission. You'll receive a form that you'll need to send back to us with a canceled check and put your banking information with the route. put your banking information with the routing and account numbers, so...
Do you want a check or deposit slip?
I think it says voided check, but either would work.
Because some banks have different numbers for deposits and...
Well, and we do want to specifically, we're not going to rely solely on the information given to us by the employee, because I do know Washington Federal is one of the specific banks that their routing number is different than on the check. So, we will reach out to each individual bank here locally to verify any type of special instructions for wires, ACHs.
Well, I know, that's why we ask for deposit slip instead of a voided check. I'm in our company, and that's the reason, because sometimes I don't want a check.
I believe the form they gave us, we'll have to look at. I think it says check, but we could easily alter that and put voided deposit slip. But like I said, as an additional measure, we will contact the individual banks to let them know that we are implementing this and kind of do additional verification on those routing, routing numbers. Because yeah, we certainly don't want this first payroll to...
Bomb.
The funds, the funds not to be distributed correctly. So, you know, the initial setup will be a little time-consuming, but once we get it set up, it's kind of a one-time thing, other than when you have new hires. We will continue with, we do payroll bi-weekly, which is a 14-day cycle, Wednesday through Tuesday, so that will not change. Really, the only thing that's going to change is the time, the day and time that our department heads need to turn in the time sheets, so we will require those. You will see, you did get a revised resolution, other than the one that was in your packet. So we did make one change after discussing with our payroll clerk, and if we require them to turn them in at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, that gives her the adequate time to process and meet the transmission deadline that First National Bank has. So the deadline will be 11:00 a.m. on Wednesdays for us to transmit and upload the data into their system, and then funds will be deposited into each employee's bank account by 8:00 a.m. on Thursday. And then we will follow up and still distribute a paper stub, so everybody will still continue to get a paper stub. And other than that, we're going to give employees the option to designate up to two accounts, if they would like to split their deposits, maybe between checking and savings. And, you know, it is going to ultimately be the employee's responsibility to notify us of any banking changes, closure of accounts, anything of that nature, because if we don't update that information, it could delay payment to that employee. The only exceptions we are going to make is we will do special payrolls, still by paper check. That would be for clothing allowances, safety incentives, education incentives, things that typically are addressed in our various union contracts, because sometimes those deadlines are very specific, and we need to give our payroll clerk the ability to meet those deadlines by issuing paper checks. There was a policy adopted back in September 23rd of 2003, so this policy would, it was just considered a payroll policy. This would replace that and add the additional policy on the direct deposit. Is there any questions?
I believe when we were talking about this five years ago or something, you told me it could not be mandatory. Has that, has that status changed? Does this say mandatory?
It did change. I had gone to a training, it's probably been more than five years ago, but at that particular time, I think it was probably a federal law that you could not mandate 100% participation, but those laws have changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, we implemented this at the seniors about a little over two years ago, and it was the best move we ever made.
Now, we will work with employees that don't have bank accounts. You know, we have several banks in town for them to choose from, and we're not going to Talon Wertabank, but they will have several options. And hopefully, we're giving them enough time, especially those that don't have accounts, to get something set up.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-14 Direct Deposit and Payroll Policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-14 Direct Deposit and Payroll Policy. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Potemstegata?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes, I'm sorry. Looking at the next item. Status report from Solid Waste Manager on Bear Proof Dumpster Project. Mr. Phillips?
Mayor and Commission, as we see the warmer weather return, bear season is coming near again, and we have some, some progress to report on the Bear Proof Dumpster Project. To kind of summarize, you know, on Mr. Berry's first day in office, we immediately went out, met with Jim Cummins of New Mexico Game &amp; Fish on re-establishing a grant that the city had been offered in the past and transitioning it to Bear Proof Dumpsters. The issue was then, and has been up to this point, we could either create a dumpster that a bear could get in, but our dumpster, our route truck couldn't dump, or we could create a dumpster that our route truck could dump, but a bear could also access. After months of searching, if you look outside, we have what is our latest and greatest prototype of something that we believe can do both for the first time. It's an automated latch removal system, retrofitted onto a Colorado Correction Association Bear Proof Dumpster. The CCA dumpster that is out there is grizzly proof, is what their terminology is, which means that dumpster in its original configuration was sent to a facility in Montana, and it has to have one hour of pause on time with the bear after it's been baited with peanut butter in order to make it through this test. So, it has done that. The kind of caveat to that is it was a manual removal system. It had a bar that went across the top of it that a second person would have had to exit the vehicle, pull the bar each and every time, and it doubles the operational costs of using such a system. That was something that we had resisted from the get-go, was, you know, taking grant funds that at the same time increased operational costs. With the retrofit design that we have now, we believe we keep the primary components of the bear-resistant container intact. While our lashing system on the racks of our trucks engage the hooks, they'll depress a spring-loaded actuator that'll allow it to open, and then it'll be closed again. The dumpster that is outside sits about eight inches higher than they would, because it's on casters. As it's a prototype, we've had to move it in and out of a fabrication shop, and it was a lot easier to do it with wheels on. So, the grant agreement with Game &amp; Fish, originally, we were looking at probably 500 dumpsters. We have somewhere around 1,000 total containers in Raton. As we went through this process with Bob Osborne of Game &amp; Fish, they actually found additional monies that they wished to bring to the City of Raton and asked if we would be willing to up our match some to try to kill this problem once and for all. Budget-wise, we've come up with a figure of 700 dumpsters, of which 600 would be identical minus the casters to the dumpster that's outside right now. The additional 100 we're seeking would be a two-yard variety of that dumpster, which is kind of a smaller mockdown, and the thinking on that is there's probably some elderly or height-challenged folks that might have a little difficulty with these containers, and we'd like to reserve a certain percentage of those. So as we roll them out, if we find out that so-and-so in this neighborhood isn't able to use their dumpster, we have at least an option to try to roll out there, but still maintaining the integrity of the bear-proof system. The only hang-up we have is that the three-yard variety was specced by Game &amp; Fish in the original grant agreement, so they're now seeking assurance from the feds that they're going to buy off on the two-yard dumpster. In the event that they don't, it's just really a shell game of how our match is played. We would purchase the two-yard dumpsters to meet our match and provide retrofit, and we would, they would purchase the three-yard dumpsters under their 65%. So it, it would be cleaner if they sign off on it, but it won't change our plan if they don't, it just changes how we budget it. I feel pretty good about the system. I believe that there'll be some success and failure early on, where we may make a little modification or tweak to the latches. As you can see on this container out here, one side is bolted, one side's welded. We'd like to kind of see which way is best for us. My gut says that the bolt-on application could be changed in the field when that, that mechanism that moves like any, after so many hundred repetitions, the spring's going to fail, a weld's going to break. If the bolt-on variety is available, we would just go out in the field and replace it. If we weld them on, we're going to have to take it to the shop, grind it off, and re-weld it. But if that proves to be the better approach, we'll weld them on there. So we've got a little 50/50 mix. A lot of folks have asked to see the container, because they've kind of heard about it word of mouth, but with liability issues in our city yard and it being an authorized personnel-only area, we haven't invited them to come by the warehouse and take a look. So for the next several days, I'd like to leave it out in front of City Hall, let people take a look at it as they come in, pay their utility bills, see what their money's getting. Bob Osborne is currently working on the purchase order, just to begin the process of purchasing the containers. Once we do, lead time is about six weeks before they arrive. In the meantime, I'll be coming to you with the bid for the retrofit from local fabricators. Hopefully, at the next commission meeting, by the time our first wave of dumpsters arrive, our first wave of retrofit kits should be ready to be installed. They'll ship generally in numbers of 36. As they get here, we'll put them on the street immediately. With the 700 containers we get, in addition to the 156 that you all generously purchased over the last year and a half, we will go a long way towards having a new container in almost every residence, which, you know, the container behind my house is probably in excess of 30 years old. So we, we're setting ourselves up for a 20-year usable life in our solid waste system, better than has been since the late 80s in Raton. And it's something that, that I thank you for, our commitment of funds is, is something around $230,000. It's money that's been needed to be spent for over a decade. We have a lot of containers, bear-proofness aside, have rotten bottoms, bad lids. You know, I'm personally embarrassed at what some of the containers look like in our residence, front and backyards, and our new container should, should give the citizens of Raton a lot better option, and should result in cost savings. The one drawback is they're not self-closing lids. We still rely on, on people's good behavior to close some. They are a little harder to leave open, they don't just flip over and stay there, but any reduction in the amount of litter around town, you know, is a reduction in labor forces that we're going to have out there, and more potholes we can patch. So hopefully, by the time they're out there, we'll have a line of defense, and by the end of the summer, this new grant agreement is set to expire June 30th, so by that date, all 700 containers should be on the street. In the addition to that, it should aid the efficiency of recycling. Our better containers that come off the street, we will repurpose into a cardboard route collection system that we've been hoping to go to, where we can automate it, and we shouldn't have to spend any money to do that. If you'd answer any questions, if you have any, but that's where we stand on bear-proof dumpsters as of today.
Sounds very good.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commission, I would just follow up on the report from Solid Waste Manager by saying that it's been a long process to get to where we're at. We're going to proceed along with these dumpsters, and there are a couple of issues. We're going to replace a lot of dumpsters that really probably are older than 30 years, or probably closer to 40 years or greater out there, and they're, they're just, it served their purpose, they've gone through their useful life. And it's time for the new dumpsters, but we, we have some confidence that it's going to do some good on the, as far as keeping bears out of the, out of those dumpsters. However, we still got bears around in town, and we have some of our friends from Game &amp; Fish here, and I think we're going to have to all get better at, you know, how we deal with wildlife in town. And we would call on them for some help as we go, but right now, maybe they go to those dumpsters, there's still going to be bears around, and we will have to continue to modify some of our behavior to, to keep the community safe and, and to deal with bears. They're, they're still here, as well as other wildlife. So, they've been great partners for us, it's been a pretty lengthy process. I would tell you that Jason, people that work at his shop, and we use some local fabrication here, with the contraption that you see outside is not something that we have really found anywhere else. It took a lot of trial runs and, and different things, and we put out a number of containers last year with some confidence, and these bears are, are pretty determined, they really have nothing better to do. And so, they got in those new dumpsters. It was an improvement. The bear would rather go to the old containers, a lot easier, but they have got in some of our newer ones. So that led to the model that you see out there, we haven't had that out in the field yet. So we'll, that's the one container that we have. We'll start putting these out there, and we still have a few things to learn about those, but that's a unique container that, as far as we know, nobody else really has. And it was developed here out of our, our need, and it took a little time to get there. So, thanks to all the staff in Solid Waste, it, it, a lot of persistence to get to the point that we're at. And this fund that is coming from Game &amp; Fish is something that we really need badly. I want to thank Game &amp; Fish for staying with us through the long process, but we really need their help, and they've been persistent as well. So a lot of thanks to them. Just moving on, a quick report on the legislative session, it was a short session, 30-day session, wrapped up on February 19th, and I think of particular importance to us here is how we fared in capital outlay, and, and this information has been put out there, but Representative Roche in the House did put us in for $150,000 for street improvements. We'll be talking to the commission, and I'll try to draft up kind of a comprehensive report of, of street improvements with our recommendations for this 2016 construction season, and bringing that to you. We'll consider a couple of things, but that will include funding that we will be going after under the co-op agreement, under MAP funding. Those, those agreements are, those grant applications are due in March, we're putting those together right now. We'll see how we fare on those. In addition, we did, Senator Combs did put us in for $50,000 in capital outlay, and that would go towards our water treatment improvement project. And on that, as we talked about, our plant was originally built, I think it came online in 1948, and we go through several projects to upgrade and meet the current regulations on that, but it's an aging plant. So we are planning a project, and when I say we, specifically, Dan Campbell and the Water Utility is, is planning a project along with Engineering Analytics to do some significant upgrades to the plant, and we were looking for some funding help from that. Now, in addition to that, $50,000 is relatively, we appreciate that capital outlay, it's a relatively small percentage of project that could ultimately be around $2 million. And so, Mr. Campbell is evaluating a program through USDA that would be partial loan funding along with grant funding. It's, it's a program that we used on wastewater treatment plant probably eight or 10 years ago. He's talking to people at USDA and see if that's something that we want to look at as far as funding that project, but if we can look at 45% grant funding on a $2 million project, it's about $900,000 of, of grant funding, and there's really not another place you can, you can go for that kind of, of grant funds. $50,000 is what we saw out of the legislature, but we appreciate that. I would tell you that we had reported, we had a meeting with the Cabinet Secretary of the New Mexico Environment Department, that's Ryan Flynn, during the session. Mr. Flynn invited us back down after the session was over, and we're going to visit him on Friday and talk about the potential for additional funding opportunities. We'll get into details, and I'll bring that information back to the commission, but we're hopeful that there may be some funding showing up for transfer station, recycling facility. And so, back to the solid waste, we're, we're looking at requirements, funding, now in addition to the container replacement, which is a large project, the transfer station, which we've talked about in the year and a half that I've been here quite a bit. And in addition, the reclamation of the landfill, Commissioner Jacomo had talked about that last night. We have to proceed along with that, and we've got to move that along fairly quickly. So those are all three pretty... Uh, so those are all, uh, three pretty significant funding, uh, requirements that we have. And, uh, we're looking at how we're gonna, uh, get all that funding together, uh, during 2016. That really doesn't address that, uh, you know, we have collection trucks. And at one time we talked about replacing one of those. Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, mechanical issues with those trucks, uh, this summer. And, uh, that's not something that we're looking at replacing. We're just working on the trucks. So we have more funding needs on top of that. Uh, but, uh, we'll hopefully come back with some news on funding opportunity for transfer station. Um, I did complete a, an application, uh, relating to our commercial kitchen. And, uh, uh, Commissioner Schuster has, uh, been very involved in, uh, the ki- kitchen at the convention center, possibly using that for a startup business and entrepreneur. Uh, we applied for an amount of $10,000 through New Mexico Economic Development, uh, program that they have for commercial kitchens. Uh, so that's in, we'll see how, uh, our application is received. Um, New Mexico Municipal League has planned a, uh, meeting in Raton from March 22nd. That would be held at the convention center, uh, starting at nine o'clock and it'll run through the morning and into the afternoon. Um, and at this session, uh, they will provide information on, uh, the legislative session, uh, what type of legislation, uh, made it through. And there wasn't very much that made it through. And legislation that failed and then what we might see coming up during, uh, the next year and, and possibly at next year's 60-day session. So that's an interesting summary that the Municipal League, uh, uh, provides. Uh, there is a registration fee of $30 for each of you. So if you would consider that, uh, make arrangements with Tricia. Um, we'll have to, uh, have you signed up for that. But, uh, we're, we, uh, appreciate the Municipal League coming to Raton in our district to hold that, uh, hold that meeting. Uh, we've got additional applications, as we talked about, for the cooperative agreement project, municipal arterial program, things that we've talked about here, uh, before. Uh, in addition, we're looking at a rate grant that's, uh, uh, for solid waste purposes, abatement of illegal dump sites, uh, that's through Solid Waste Bureau. Uh, previously we had used rate funds to get rid of scrap tires. And, uh, we're putting something together currently that we'll try to bring to, uh, the commission. And then we talked about the, uh, potential of, of grant funds through USDA for the, the, uh, water project. Um, I will attend a meeting tomorrow morning, uh, that will be held here. Smith Power, uh, will be in town for most of the day. That is our, uh, successful bidder for the natural gas fire generation project. Uh, they offered, uh, generation equipment through General Electric Yenbacher. Uh, and we'll make arrangements on moving that project forward. Um, I think that, uh, realistically, we'll look at, uh, about the beginning, uh, of 2017 when that equipment will be in place and, and be operational. So we're backing into that timeframe. Um, you had heard about some of the construction going on. Uh, senior center construction is moving along and, um, is getting, uh, later in the project, looking very good. Multimodal project has, uh, uh, started up again. Uh, we had a winter shutdown, uh, they did not work today, but, uh, work has gone on, uh, this week. And as the weather improves, we'll see that project, uh, coming up out of the ground. Um, I would like to call on Tricia to give you a rundown on, uh, the schedule for the election that's, uh, remaining. Tricia?
Yes, um, the last day to, for our office to mail out an absentee ballot will be Friday, um, February 26th. And that will also be the last day for early voting. The day of the election will be March 1st. And, um, the con, or, I'm sorry, the consolidated precincts will be, um, the Raton Convention Center and the St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Parish Hall. And if you're not sure about which one you're supposed to go to, you can call our office. Um, other than that, um, I think everything has already, um, passed deadlines, so.
Thank you, Tricia. Um, I think we've got two remaining items. First of all, I'd like to recognize that we have members, uh, here present of our financial advisory committee. Uh, I have been, uh, really happy with how that committee, uh, has functioned. I, I think it's a valuable committee, uh, for us and certainly for the staff. So we have, uh, some personnel, uh, on hand from that committee and, and also from our, uh, our economic development committee. And you remember that sometime back, uh, we talked about, uh, a, a revision to our local economic development ordinance. And in that, uh, was a committee made up of, of, uh, staff members, uh, as well as, uh, people that the commission had appointed from the community. We have members of our financial, I mean, our economic development committee, uh, present as well. And, and I could tell the commission that they have been working hard on, on several economic development opportunities. And I really like to recognize, uh, Grow Raton, who has really gone, uh, you know, above and beyond the call to pursue some of these economic development, uh, uh, possibilities. They don't all work out, as Commissioner Chavez has said. Uh, when you get right down to, uh, what's required, uh, there are some tough deals there. Uh, but there's a lot of work that goes into, uh, a lot of different projects in order to have one come to fruition. So I'd like to recognize, uh, uh, Mr. Jenkins here. Thank you, Paul, for your efforts on economic development, um, and Grow Raton. Uh, they've been working very hard. Mr. Hegeman from Economic Development to the state also put out a great deal of effort. Uh, Mr. Walton is from our Economic Development Committee. And I ask them to be on hand, uh, tonight to, uh, kinda help us celebrate the, uh, the DOS thing. But I would, uh, just remember there are actually a lot of opportunities out there, a, a lot of which are frustrating and, and, you know, they don't really lead to anything. And, and it can take a lot of effort to, uh, sometimes you feel like you're spinning your wheels. So I want to appreciate, uh, all of our, uh, all of our board members, our committee members, and recognize their hard work on those two areas specifically. So thank you. Um. We have other, uh, boards and committees and commissions as well. Uh, we're looking for, uh, someone to sit on our lodgers tax, uh, board. And Tricia, do you remember if there is a requirement, uh, qualification for that board? Is that a lodger that, uh, we need?
It is someone that has to be affiliated with the lodging industry.
So we'd like, uh, someone with the, uh, lodging industry to, uh, uh, volunteer to sit on our lodgers tax board. That's an important, uh, board. We're looking for a applicant for our library board. We need two people for our parks and rec board. Uh, we need a person for our planning and zoning. Uh, we will be trying to get the airport board, uh, up and running that hasn't had a meeting for a while. And I understand that we need, uh, someone on the housing board. So, uh, that's the way a small town works is when people will, uh, give of their time, uh, in that manner. And, uh, so we need some help. I would ask people to, uh, to, uh, consider that, uh, fill out an application, put their name in there. Uh, we do need help on a number of boards. And, uh, Mayor, that is all I have.
Thank you, Tricia. How about the South Interchange? Is there a startup need on that?
Uh, Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioner, I have not had a, uh, conversation with anyone from DOT. So I don't have, uh, uh, really, you know, direct information to give you. My speculation is about the 1st of March, that construction will, uh, recommence. But, uh, that's not based on a conversation with DOT.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Um, Mayor, if I may, I, I really wanted to thank the PBW for holding, uh, another, um, candidate forum last night. It was very successful and I think it's a great thing for our community to be able to hear from all of the candidates.
On that note, I'd like to congratulate everybody that was there representing themselves, running for the position. Uh, you, you did, uh, represent yourselves very well.
Thank you.
And, um, I have two other things. Are we continuing, uh, or is there any plan to continue to, to have a construction and demolition dump? One of the things that came up at the forum was cleaning up the town and it's hard to do it without a place to put the debris.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioner, I, I would, I, I meant to bring this up. I'm glad you, you did mention that. With the new, uh, dumpster, and if people want to take a look at it on the way out, um, you can't get a couch in that dumpster. Uh, you can't get in, uh, an engine block or, uh, white goods or a lot of things that maybe we would find in the dumpster. And from our perspective, that's a good thing. But, uh, any of those things, if a rate payer will take them to the landfill and, you know, we operate six hours a day, there's not a cost to get rid of those bulky items. There's a cost to the city. Uh, if we take a mattress or, uh, couch to, uh, to, uh, Wagon Mount, there's a cost to us. But we will not charge extra to a rate payer. Uh, now, if they're outside of our, uh, service area, you know, of course, there probably is gonna be. Now, you bring up the issue of construction debris. And, um, there is a cost for construction debris. And a lot of times the city winds up being a middleman in, uh, in, in debris like that. Uh, so, uh, what we try to advise people that are doing construction is there is a roll-off service in town and they do what we do. They would take it directly to the Wagon Mount landfill. Construction debris was a different, uh, story when the city ran the landfill. It was really, uh, pretty cheap to dump it there, not a lot of transportation costs. And we would take, uh, any construction debris. But now we're forced to take it somewhere else, uh, just like, uh, a, a construction contractor would. Uh, so we encourage those people to, uh, dispose of it legally, uh, uh, use our roll-off service and take it to a, uh, a registered facility, uh, to dump. And that, that's not always going on, uh, but we do try to advise, uh, uh, people that are involved in construction in that way. Now, uh, homeowner quantities, uh, we will accept that. So if you're doing a, a, a home renovation project as a rate payer, that's built into your fee base, uh, you can take that homeowner quantity of, uh, of, of really any material, if it's not a special waste, and we will accept that at no cost at the landfill. But contractor quantities, large construction projects, uh, those really need to go directly to Wagon Mount. And there is provision for that.
Okay, so, but, but the question I ask is, are we pursuing a, our own demolition and construction?
There is a thought out there. Uh, there was a 50-acre parcel of land that, uh, uh, at one time was planned for a new landfill. And then there was a proposal for a construction and demolition debris landfill. I would tell you, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, that given, uh, those priorities that we talked about, uh, that is, uh, some years back. That's not, uh, something I would recommend to you as pursuing, you know, immediately. We need to get over the hump on the other solid waste projects that we talked about. But it's a consideration for the future.
Okay, all right. And, uh, when we first did the loan for the solid waste, I don't even know what you want to call it. There was a provision in there for a new street sweeper. Has that been taken out of, are we, did we eliminate that as part of the?
It is eliminated, the funds now. Uh, there was, uh, uh, documentation to go to New Mexico Finance Authority, uh, where the funds will be directed towards the transfer station recycle center and, uh, towards our matching funds on containers. Uh, but the street sweeper is, is not in there. That is a, a piece of equipment that is about a quarter of a million dollars. And, uh, on balance, we have put quite a bit of work into our existing street sweeper. Um, now, uh, we feel like our street sweeper is fairly functional. A lot of times, our, uh, 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 our issue with sweeping streets is manpower. And, and so our guys are spread pretty thin. And there is a big requirement now that we didn't have in past years on recycling. Recycling is a good thing, we're all for it, but it takes up a lot of manpower. So we're not out patching potholes or, or sweeping streets with those people, uh, when they're doing that. So, uh, that is a big time requirement. We're all for that and it's, we've had a lot of success, uh, on that and keeping that, uh, material out of the landfill. Uh, but there is a time requirement. So a lot of times it's manpower, uh, that will, uh, kinda, uh, prevent us from doing as much as we would want. Uh, now I did, uh, you know, hear some discussion last night at the forum about why don't we sweep all of the streets? And, uh, that's a particular issue that we have in Raton. But I, I know where I live, a, a, a lot of the times, uh, and this is, I think, part of life in a small town as well. The neighbors will go out with their wheelbarrow and shovel and they will get that piece of curb and gutter in front of the house and even get a, a, a pressure washer or something, a broom, and clean that up. Now, you, you gotta do that probably once a year, uh, but that really helps the appearance of town. Um, uh, it, it benefits our property individually. And that's just, uh, something that in other places, um, uh, people do do. You clean up in front of your house, you take responsibility for, uh, everything, even if it's in the right way or part of the street. And, and that's something that, uh, uh, I think would really help the appearance of, of town. Now, uh, uh, you know, we recognize the responsibility that, uh, in places the gutter is completely, uh, full. And, uh, that's a tough one for our crew because we do have a limitation on, on manpower. And, uh, they're spread fairly thin. So what we're finding is we have a lot of, uh, drainage, uh, issues. And we're gonna have a lot of drainage issues this fall, uh, that we're really probably years behind getting around to. And those have to be a priority. Uh, uh, of course, I know if I drive in that same pothole, uh, every day, it really starts to get under my skin pretty quickly. So we've made an effort on pothole patching, uh, really tried to ramp that up. I know that we have some out there. Uh, we, we're out looking at them and, uh, trying to allocate our resources there. And, and so sometimes this gutter issue, i- it gets kicked down the list a little bit. Uh, we would appreciate any help that, uh, homeowners can give us. We recognize that we have responsibility there. But a lot of times we do run the swi- street sweeper on the primaries. And, and those are the, the places where the visitors to town, uh, come into Raton and, and we want to make a good impression on them. We want to look neat and orderly. So we do, uh, put a lot of effort on those primaries where our visitors are gonna be.
All right, and if, as a homeowner, if you don't keep your gutters clean, they deteriorate, then you really fall in the pothole.
That's correct, that's correct. So, you know, there's a lot of elements there, but part of that is, is, is being a good citizen and, and, uh, you know, it takes a little time and effort from all of us. But that's a lot of manpower that we would, uh, really appreciate tapping into.
You want to have anything else? Is there anything else to, to come before this commission? Seeing none, meaning adjourned.